Good evening, everyone. This is the February 1st meeting of the Revere City Council. Please rise with our pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members. Councillor Guanasso? Here. Councillor Haas? Here. Councillor Keefe?
Here.
Here. Councillor McKenna?
Here.
Here. Councillor Morabito?
Here.
Here. Councillor Nowosowski?
Here.
Here. Councillor Patch?
Here.
Here. Councillor Powers?
Here.
Here. Councillor Rotundo is absent. Councillor Zambudo?
Here.
Here. And Councillor President Janino?
Here.
Here. Quorum is present.
At this time, I'd please like everyone to stand for a moment of silence. Revere lost a very beloved member of our community this week. Fire Lieutenant Stephen Chamberlain passed away. And I know he was very close with many members of this council and many people in Revere. So if we could have a moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Calendar item number one. Joint meeting of the utility companies for the purpose of discussing double polls.
Glad, thank you guys for coming tonight.
Thank you. Just to give you a brief summary of what's up for us today. We have a crew in the city.
Okay. We have a crew in the city of Revere now. And they've been in Revere for a week. We have 77 ball and courts. They'll be addressed all during the time that they will be here. They will not leave until those 77 are done. And I expect that it will be sometime towards the end of February before the elimination of those 77 would be seen by all.
Sounds good. Thank you. Are there any councillors that have any questions? Councillor Patch?
Thank you, Madam President. Stan, as we had a conversation before the meeting and you told us what you just said, told me what you just said. Clifton Street, it's been ready to go for like four years. And I just, the only reason I mention it again tonight is because the neighbors on the street hear me every time you're up here. Clifton Street, you know? And it makes us, it just makes us look kind of bad. I mean, you know, I mean, we try to get, the most we can do is ask you, and hopefully you'll do it. Now, this is good news tonight, that, because I was going through the list today and I saw, you know, my 77, you know, ready to go. So I'm sure he's listening tonight. Tony, I know you're listening. And we are gonna get it done. And I want to hold you to that.
Okay. Councillor, I'll see if they'll go alphabetically.
That'd be good. That's not Revere, so that'd be good, because we gotta make some, we gotta make a lot of friends up there.
But it is on our list. It is in our ball and court, Clifton Avenue.
Right.
And it will get done in this flurry of activity.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Powers?
Thank you, Madam President. My question is for Andrew. Two requests that were made previous, and they're still out there. One of them seems like a very easy fix. It's the illumination down at the central parking lot. When you pull in, there's a pole probably 50 feet directly in front. And that light has been out for some time now, considerable amount of time.
That's the parking lot, right?
Yeah. That's on Central Avenue at the central parking lot. And I would say that that's probably just the replacement of a lamp, unless this-
There's some private lighting in there as well, so I'll check to make sure that we own it.
Yeah. Well, either you do or the city does, someone.
Right.
It's not owned by a resident down there. I can say that. And then the other one is down at the corner of Bickford and the Linway.
Yeah, we're aware of that one. That the pole is missing? Is that the one?
The pole's missing. It's been missing since last October.
The base has been repaired. It's set. In fact, I told Councillor Zambudo last week. It's in the schedule. We'll be out there, if not next, if not the end of this week, we'll be out there next week.
Next week.
Installing that pole.
Okay. Yeah. Because that's been down for some time now.
Yeah, there was an issue with the base, but that's been straightened out.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Nowosowski?
Thank you, Madam President. Gentlemen, thanks for coming up again. I'm glad we are continuing this program of the monthly meetings. It's been very productive since Mayor Ambrosino was in, when we started this. I guess, Dan, that pole 48 in Revere Beach Parkway, we're waiting seven years for that one to come down. There's nothing on it. Hasn't been anything on it for a long, long, long time. I think you said it was yours. And pole 591 on Shirley Ave, Verizon is on that one, I guess, next up. So I would hope that we can get a push on that one. Okay? And of course, Dan, you know, we gotta get working on these streetlights.
We'll talk tomorrow.
You know? It's important. There's a lot, a lot of dark areas, especially, you asked me about the state roadway. I know there's some on Revere Beach Parkway, you know, between Kellside Ave and Campbell Ave, that quite a few are out.
We actually, I think we got a request from the mayor to increase the lighting in that area as well.
I think that was on Ocean Ave we did that one. There were like four or five.
I thought it was one on the parkway near Hillside.
Okay. We put in a-
Several locations.
That's an additional light. That's a new one. A new pole they put up for, to feed the power into the new apartment house down there.
Okay.
But down on, that's on Ocean Ave. But in Councillor McKenna's neighborhood, around 10 Ocean Ave and that big intersection coming over the new bridge, the Reedus Singa Bridge, I don't mean to step in your toes, councillor. Okay, I'm sorry. But, you know, I've been working on this one since 2014. When they built the new bridge, the new lights have not worked. There's about six or seven new lights that were never operational, coming over that new bridge over Revere Beach Parkway, over State Road.
Okay.
And I put in work orders on it, and still not done. And then there's a whole bunch of lights. And one of the issues, you know, other than Councillor McKenna, I got calls from DCR asking, you know, can I get anything done down there? There's at least seven or eight lights in that whole intersection of State Road, Revere Beach Parkway, neighborhood. And there were work orders on them, and, you know, unfortunately, I never got to follow up on it. But they were never done. And I could email you the old numbers, but what about the process of calling in lights? I know, I'm bothering you all the time with loads of them. You know, is there any way that the people can do it other than calling that 800 number?
The online system is not working right now.
Oh, it hasn't been for about eight months?
Right. And I don't have any update on that. So we're resorting to either faxing or calling the number.
Is there a fax number that we can tell people to fax it in to?
There is, I don't have it on me.
Okay.
But there is a fax on me, right at the customer service.
Okay. If you can get that, because trying to get this customer service, you have to wait 25 minutes just to get-
I'm aware of that.
You know, service on it. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor McKenna?
Thank you, Madam President. We have, I've gotten a couple of calls. We're Suffolk Downs, Furlong Ave, along that stretch, down to Furlong Ave, down where the Stop and Shop is, in Target, the lights are out there. And people going into Target, they can't see the pedestrians, so a couple of pedestrians have already almost gotten hit. So that's a big problem down there. So it's on the Winthrop Ave side going into Furlong Drive. All those lights out against Suffolk Downs, they're all out.
Is that the DCR road portion or?
I don't, I don't know. For the entrance of Suffolk Downs along the side of, that's DCR? Okay. I don't, which, it's on, it's, I don't know. No, it's on, going into-
Furlong Drive.
That's what I'm saying. Furlong Drive. On the side of where Suffolk Downs stables are.
Okay.
And, and the walkway going towards Beachmont on Winthrop Ave, those are out too. So, and I've already gotten a couple of calls on that. So I was gonna call myself, but while you're here, I might as well take advantage of it.
Okay. Maybe we can talk. I will need some poll numbers or-
Okay, I can get your poll numbers. There's no problem. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor McKenna. Councillor Keefe?
Thank you, Madam President. Appreciate you taking the time to come up here today. I spoke to Stan real briefly, but as a new city councillor, I do agree, and I heard Ira speak and Joanne speak about, this is a pretty arduous process, and I can only imagine you don't enjoy coming up every month, although I know that you love our company. As an outsider coming in and being a new councillor, this is really a giant time suck, I call it. If this was work, that's what we call it. It's gonna be a waste of time to come up here, spend all this time to talk about the polls. But as a resident, I got some, you know, some of my early calls have been in regards to lights being out, or not so much on the double polls. But I did call the 1-800 number and the automated system on, the online system was down, of course, like you had mentioned. So this was just last week. I didn't receive a response. I did ask to get a response just on the time. So I wanted to give you the poll number now, if that would be helpful, because it's a very vocal resident. Like Mr. Patch said, I'd like to, I don't want to use his name on the air, but it's poll number 3535. He has been fighting for this poll since my predecessor. I can only imagine there's been some other ones. And there's also in front of-
Councillor, what street?
It's on, pardon me, on Mountain Ave. It's around 535 Mountain Ave, but the poll number is 3535. And then there's also another poll with the light issued, and that's 7 Madison. But like, the bigger, the greater-
7 Madison?
7 Madison, which is off of Mountain Ave.
And that's the house number of 7?
Correct. It's directly across the street on the corner of Mountain and Madison.
Okay.
But really, what I wanted to mention is, you know, for a large company, I think the quicker that you can get the online system up and going, it'd be easier for everybody, because it's a large waste of time for all of us to continue doing this and the back and forth, where if there was an updated ticket system, the resident or the councillor can go and log online and say, great, poll number 3535 is taken care of, and we're good. That would be my hopes.
Thank you, councillor. Are there any other councillors that have any questions, comments, or concerns? All right. Seeing and hearing none. Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate you appearing for us. Thank you.
Calendar item number two. Unfinished business motion presented by councillor Patch, that the mayor request inspectional services in the police department traffic division to cite the owner of the Shell gas station and the adjoining auto body repair shop for various violations.
Councillor Patch?
Thank you, Madam President. As I did the last meeting, we tabled this. A couple of my colleagues were gonna speak to the owners and try to have it straightened out without, and if you want, I'll yield to them, and then I'll answer.
Thank you, councillor Patch. Councillor Guanasso?
Thank you, Madam President. As councillor Patch stated, I happened the occasion to go down and visit the establishment this past week. And of the three concerns, I will address each and every one of them. Vehicles are repaired and stored in the gas station lot on Newman Street. That's not true. The gas owner asked, and the other councillor who happened to be present was councillor Nowosowski, he asked us to please have the police take down the numbers of those cars that are parked there, because none of those are the responsibility of the ownership of the gas station. So I think it's incumbent upon us to have the police department go down. They have the ability to check the IDs of those registrations and act accordingly. One of them has a plate in the back window, and it's been there for several weeks. Now, that certainly leads one to believe that a gas station wouldn't leave anything out there for several weeks, because you don't make money until the job is completed. But in any event, I suggest that the police attend to that matter and review that for the benefit of the area residents. And the second one, the large trucks that possibly permanently stored at the repair station. There is one canister that is permanent, and that's part of the structure. It's been part of the structure since day one. Everybody agreed that that would be okay. There is one other that's mobile, and it can be moved, at the discretion of the ownership. They are allowed to have one that's not tagged or having a license. But the thing being, if we ask them to move it, he'll do it. And third being, vehicles traveling the wrong direction on Squire Road. Well, councillor Nowosowski and myself saw firsthand as to what's taking place there. It's not the Shell gas station going over to the repair shop. Lo and behold, right before our rise, as we were speaking, a customer from Dairy Mart dotted across Shell gas station, across Newman, and up Newman. So it's people who are frequenting the establishment called Dairy Mart that are using that as a cutoff. And so this, and we're putting the onus of responsibility on this gas station, which is unfortunate and not true. So, and this was like it was planned or performed, right before our rise disappeared. So it was amazing to see such a thing. And I agree with the, and all three of those issues that councillor Patch has made and brought forward, because of area concerns, of which I am a portion of that concern, have been addressed. And I look forward to a working relationship with the gas station owner. He keeps a clean place. I mean, if you go down and see it, it's really clean. In the back, he might have a couple of tires and stuff, but he does have a dumpster for that, you know? So as far as repair shops, and I have a few on Broadway, I'd like to see, be as clean as this location is, so. And that's my report, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Nowosowski?
Thank you, Madam President. I know I'm kind of an outsider, being from Shirley Ave area, but I happen to be up in Squire Road quite a bit, and I know this gentleman, he used to be a constituent of mine, living on Ocean Avenue, and I did go up and talk to him. And he said, whatever we need to do, he will take care of. He's a very cooperative gentleman. And, you know, Councillor Guanasso was absolutely correct. If we didn't see it ourselves, we never would have believed it. But, you know, some of the other issues, I know some of the neighbors have other stories, but we just don't happen to see those stories. So I think it's, you know, something we ought to give some kind of a benefit of doubt to this vendor and this store owner, and work with him and see if we can get it without going into a full-blown and putting other departments head-on to it. So thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, councillors. Are there any other councillors that would like to speak on this issue? Councillor Patch?
Thanks again, Madam President. And I thanks to my colleagues to try to help me out here on this matter. See, we, councillor Guanasso, myself, share Newman Street, we each have a side. I can agree with you, councillor Guanasso, that, I can believe that about Dairy Mart, because they haven't really been a good neighbor on Squire Road. But I've had several people that either eaten lunch at Nick's across the street or something, have seen the cars in Shell leave and do the exact same thing, go the wrong way on Squire Road. Well, anyways, I just want the issue to go away and be corrected. I spoke, I spoke today to Sergeant Janino of the traffic division, and he's out this week, but he will Monday. He actually had complaints of the same incident happening, coming out of the Shell gas station. And he's gonna check, he's gonna, I still, the cars on Newman Street and Lantern Road, I know for a fact the cars, well, the cars from Newman Street, the property directly behind him and a couple up from that house, they don't have cars. So I don't know where these, where these cars are coming from, but I know the one, the particular car you're talking about with the plate in the back window, that's been there, I've checked on this, on this area for the last several weeks. I mean, that car's been there. And I can't believe, I'm sorry, I just, I don't know where it's coming, I can't believe that it's not coming from that auto body or that mechanical shop. But anyways, Sergeant Janino's gonna, he's gonna go down and check that area out Monday. And hopefully, when you do see him again, I don't particularly think it's as clean as it should be. I mean, there's more, there's more cars in that lot than I think ought to be, and that he's, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to improve Squire Road. We're doing a pretty good job so far with the additional market basket, and you're gonna see another probably development down next to Joe's Market. You know, I just, I just think that these people that, you know, own these gas stations, and I think it's not only him, it's the other, the other auto body shop on the other side of Lantern Road, that some of those cars on Lantern Road are probably his. So let's, Sergeant Janino, I don't know if we ought to keep it on the table, or we can just take it off the table, and, huh? I'll keep it, no, I'll keep it on, I'll keep it on the table, and I can report out whatever, if Sergeant Janino either corrects the problem or not, we can, or I have to pass it up to the building department and also have him continue to investigate it. But I want to thank the, for the help from my colleagues, and we'll see what happens. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Guanasso?
Not for, and I'm not gonna debate this any further, but we should go down in Mario's, he has cars all over the place on Beach Road, he has them on Pecan Street, he has them all on the turn coming off Revere Street. There's someone that's offending, all these cars are on this gentleman's property. And I suggest, everybody who's parked on Newman Street, be towed. If they're not legally parked, they should be towed. And this gentleman that owns this establishment agreed to it. So he would be foolhardy if they're his customers to suggest and say, yeah, let them get towed. So he feels that strong about it. Well, maybe it is the other, the auto repair place that has those cars there. I don't really know. It's hard to investigate it unless you have the ability to go into the computer and see who these registrations are placed with. And once we do that, and the police can do that in a matter of minutes, we can solve this whole problem. But I think we should also, if we're gonna clean up the whole area, and then we go make the turn, come down, go up Revere, up Broadway, and we can go all on the corner of Folsom and Broadway, get that repair shop, and then go across the way, that's a real pigsty, is the one at the corner of Fisk Street and Broadway. These are, these are problems. These cars are all over the place. These cars that we're talking about are on this gentleman's property. So we're, if we're going to do a job, we gotta do it right. And we gotta show the citizens of Fisk Street, of Folsom Street, and Beach Road, Newman, and all these side streets, that we're in the same thought process to clean up the whole area. I think this one individual being targeted, I think there's a heck of a lot more traffic coming out of Joe's. I mean, that's, and they're coming out of one exit, and when you try to make a left coming out of Nortgate, you can't do it, because cars are coming down the street, and you're there, and then you're stuck in the middle of the highway when the light turns green. So it's a situation that, you know, it's a heavily congested area, and to target one individual? Let's go ahead and get those rental trucks that are all over the property that we're talking about, that we gave two years' lead weight to, to clean up the area. Let's get them. So I think, in order to be fair, we have to treat each and every one the same way. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Haas?
Madam Chairman, I believe someone made a request. Leave it on the table until Lieutenant Janino comes back and wait for his report. Leave it on the table.
Thank you, councillor. I have full confidence in the traffic division and the police department in handling this issue. So we will leave this on the table until it is resolved and stay on the matter that's at hand, so we'll leave it on the table.
Calendar item number three. Report of the appointment subcommittee.
Councillor Guanasso?
Madam President, this afternoon, we met earlier, we had one appointment before us. It was the appointment of White Mountain Cable Construction LLC, 37 Air Road, Littleton, Mass, as a licensed drain layer. It was voted out favorably, and I asked the committee of the whole to do the same. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, councillor. Roll call on the appointment?
Shall the city council confirm the appointment of White Mountain Cable Construction Company LLC? Councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Haas? Yes. Councillor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Rotundo is absent. Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Councillor President Janino? Yes. The appointment has been confirmed. Calendar item number four. Communication from the mayor relative to responses to several motions from the January 25th meeting.
Place on file?
Motion placed on file.
Calendar item number five. Motion presented by councillor McKenna, that the mayor and administrative staff be requested to meet with Massport and advocate for mitigation monies for the city of Revere. The expansion at Logan Airport of seven new docking gates in Terminal E to accommodate the A380 international large airbuses will heavily impact the residents of Beachmont and other parts of the city. The city of Revere is long overdue to be compensated by Massport for enduring the everyday noise and pollution Revere residents have suffered throughout the years from planes continuously flying overhead.
Councillor McKenna?
Thank you, Madam President. So I just, I just wanna give a little history of what's going on at Massport. I don't know when it's gonna start, but Terminal E is going to accommodate these large A380 enormous airbuses. What they're gonna do is, they're gonna build seven gates over oversized gates to fit these planes into the loading docks. And over the years, I've, I know that we, as a city, have not gotten compensation for what we deserve, especially Beachmont in the Point of Pines area, where the planes are constantly coming over. I know that I can see the stewardess handing out their snacks, because they just, they come over my house so close, I can see within the airplane, because I live in Be- Because I live in Beachmont, and they have, before they descend, they have to go over my house, which is one of the highest points in Beachmont. So I just want to, I pulled this from the Winthrop transcript, and it says, "Some of the payment that Winthrop receives in lieu of taxes, money is because Potter Logan is actually on Winthrop land." But I think as a good neighbor, and for the sake of goodwill, they also provide money for parks and recreation, the Fourth of July fireworks, Chamber of Commerce events, and they donate to a lot of the small profit organization events. I pulled this from the East D Times. "The East Boston Foundation gets money directly from Massport, which is distributed to organizations in the community through a board of directors. Organizations have to complete a request for funds that the foundation considers, and the grant money to a wide range of community organizations and events." I don't remember the last time, I think we've gotten piddles, maybe $3,000 here, $5,000 here, but you're talking about millions that these two cities are getting for mitigation money. So I have talked to Mayor Rigo and Omar, and they are in negotiations with Massport, representative from Massport. So I hope we can get our fair share of what we deserve in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McKenna. Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Madam President. I think it's an excellent motion. It's something that's been before the city council many times, and seems to have fallen on deaf ears many times. I can speak for the Point of Pines area. If you're watching television, and you happen to live on Rice Avenue or any of those other side streets down there, the noise is unbearable. You lose complete sight of everything you're watching, because if a plane goes over, you miss sentences. And I think that, I know in Beachmont, years ago, many years ago, they did some soundproofing. I think that's something that's long overdue down in the Point of Pines. What I would rather see is the flights redirected out further, away from the shoreline, so that the people down there would have some relief. It seems to have gotten worse and worse over the past three or four years. They're supposed to have a monitoring system down there that monitors at Kiri Circle, I believe, the flights coming in. Well, if that is working, certainly, shame on them, because the noise down there, the noise level is unbelievable. And I'm glad Omar is sitting in the audience tonight here, and I hope he will take note of the fact that it's a very serious problem down there, and it should be addressed sooner than later. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Haas?
Thank you, Madam President. This issue has been brought before this council many times. But the difference this time is the reconfiguration of the airport to accommodate the much larger airlines. I think the motion makes sense, especially with the reconfiguration of the airport. And I think we should pursue it, without question. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Haas. Counselor Guanasso?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't know what aircraft they were flying last night and landing last night, but it seemed to me exceptionally loud, and I'm not certain as to, it had to be the largest planes coming in ever, because you could hear the tremendous sound. And I talked to my wife, and I said, "Do you hear that?" And it happened on a few occasions, how loud they were. So given the fact that these airbuses are about to take place, this is gonna be a really alarming thing for our community. So I think all of us experienced that. The lower end of Revere Street experiences that. All the people along the beachfront experience that. And certainly, the people of Beachmont experience that. So this is something that should be addressed. I think remuneration is the least thing that they can do for us to show good faith and goodwill to the people of Revere. So I'm all in favor of this, and I hope the mayor and his administrative staff work with, in conjunction with the council, to get some action on this as quick as possible. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna?
To your question and answer, the airbuses are here. They're at Logan. They're flying in. The only thing is, they're landing on the tarmac, and they have to disembark on the tarmac, because they can't fit the airbuses at the gates. So they're here, and they're flying over us. But with this expansion, I mean, there might be one or two. They're coming in from Asia. They're coming from Dubai. But you're talking about maybe one or two, but they're getting ready to put seven gates. So that's pretty big. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Guanasso?
One other thing, Madam President, I forgot that the, I think the airport is getting ready for international trade, based on the fact that they were gonna have a casino in Everett, which will attract a lot of these high rollers from these foreign countries. So, especially in Dubai and countries of that nature. And so this is a reality. It's here, and it's coming. And maybe it wasn't airbus last night, because I couldn't believe the sound. It was really that loud and frightening somewhat. So I think we ought to move on this as quick as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there any other councilors that would like to speak on this? All right, seeing and hearing none. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number six, motion presented by Counselor Zambudo that the following proposed ordinance relative to dog kennels be ordered to a public hearing. "The purpose of this proposed zoning amendment is to mitigate the major illegal dog breeding issues plaguing the city."
Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Madam President. Let me state immediately here, so that none of my colleagues expect that this is a self-serving ordinance that I put in. This is put in for the interim dog officer, who's having terrible problems with illegal dog breeding. I'm not gonna be specific about naming breeds, but let's just say that these dogs are not being bred for household pets. They're being bred to become vicious, bred and trained to become vicious dogs for protection of their illegal substances, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We all know what goes on. There are, if you look at the dog ordinance that we have right now for kennels, it's one line, one single line, not even a full sentence, that tells us what a dog kennel is. So I was asked for my expertise, which I gave. I filed a disclosure form stating what I did here. And I have no intention, after this comes out of public hearing and goes to committee, I have no intention of even voting on this, because of the appearance of a conflict of interest. So my goal here is strictly to help solve a problem that we're having in the city with illegal dog breeding. And that's why this ordinance is on the table. So I would ask that it be sent to a public hearing, and we deal with it in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there any other councilors that wish to speak on this? All right, seeing and hearing...
Madam Chairman?
Sure, Counselor Haas?
Madam Chairman, I'm a little leery of this particular ordinance change. It has some negative effects. For instance, my daughter lives in Fenley Street. There's dogs that live in back of her, that bark 5:30 in the morning, 6 o'clock. They wake up the whole neighborhood. I'm afraid that if we enact this particular ordinance, it'll create a dog pound if the individual meets a certain criteria in a residential neighborhood. And I've got a lot of questions pertaining to this, and...
Counselor Zambudo?
I think that it may be directed at me, and that's fine if it is. But I would say to my dear colleague that if he has a problem with dogs barking, there's a remedy for that. This ordinance would have nothing to do with. You can certainly file a complaint about somebody's dogs that are barking. And it has nothing to do with trying to control illegal dog breeding. This would not mitigate dog barking. Thank you.
I'm just worried about a dog kennel going into any one of our neighborhoods, okay? And I don't think that's fear to the residents of our city, that they're gonna have a kennel next door if they meet a certain criteria. I understand what Tony's trying to do is get more money for the city, but at what cost? That's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Counselor. I believe that this should go to a public hearing, and then we can have experts on the subject presented to the council, answer all of our questions, and really dig a little bit deeper into this, because that's what public hearings are for. So we'll order this to a public hearing. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered. So there's no further business. This meeting is adjourned until the meeting of February 8th, 2016. Thank you all.